Everybody want to take their seats, we're gonna start in less than a minute.
Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council Workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages, and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, good afternoon, welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of August 8th, 2023. The meeting is called to order. And before I do a attendance roll call, I do want to let everyone know, today's meeting is gonna be streamed again, as they just said, on Facebook and YouTube. Unfortunately, due to technical difficulties, the meeting is not being aired on Channel 11. So with that said, we'll go ahead and roll call. I thought I seen Councilmember Tomachov here, I don't see her now. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Aldama.
Present.
Councilmember Hugh. Councilmember Melner. Councilmember Turner.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Tomachov. Okay, I don't see her. I'm present, if she comes in, if you take note on that, clerk. With that, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number one for us, please?
Cemetery update and rate discussion.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, and welcome back. Hope your summer has gone well. First item today was gonna be an update on the cemetery. It'll be presented by Charles Thomas, our Deputy Director of Field Operations, and of course assisted by Michelle Watanco.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have here in front of you an update on the cemetery. I think last time any city staff spoke to you about the cemetery was several years back, so we've got a nice update for you, and a rate discussion, and this item is for information only. So, Mr. Thomas?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and welcome back. Today, I want to touch on some cemetery background. We'll go over operational update. We'll discuss some benefits for the residents as far as the cemetery is concerned, some historical cost as far as providing services for the residents, and then discuss rate adjustments. Cemetery was established in 1900 and houses some of the original settlers of Glendale. Many of those settlers were buried near their homes and/or churches, and were later moved to the cemetery once it was established. In 1962, the city of Glendale assumed responsibility of the cemetery. Cemetery is about 21 total acres of burial and cremation space, with a small columnarium currently. 60% of that site is crushed granite, and the remaining 40% is landscape with mature trees. And our most recent rate increase at the cemetery was in 2009. As a part of our operational review, we wanted to take the time to put ourselves in the residents' shoes as far as what it takes to set up services for a loved one. And immediately, we discovered that it takes a little bit of time. You have to go, originally, you had to go to the Field Operations Office first, set up an appointment. Your appointment would be taken at the cemetery, so you can select your plot. And then to process payment, you would have to come back to the facility, or excuse me, Field Operations Campus, take payments. Looking at that, it definitely added additional stress to setting up final resting place for your loved ones. So when we looked at that, we knew we had to make some changes. We wanted to make sure that we had people at the cemetery, so when people showed up, they could get immediate service. You can view your plot there, you can select a plot there, you can make your payment there, you can have contracts, contract conversation there. And if you don't know where your loved one is, a family member comes in, they can ask staff to help them find where that loved one is. Our mission is always to improve the lives of the people we serve, so we thought not only to have staff there, but before we did that, we had to make sure that the infrastructure was in order before we did that. So we had to have our IT department, our Budget Department, help us move our pay system from the Field Operations Campus over to the cemetery, which means we needed the city's secure IT network over there first. Once we moved those items over there, we sunset our old antiquated pay system and set up the new pay system over at the cemetery tucked behind Glendale Secure Network. And we want to thank Budget and IT for helping us with that. Finally, once all the infrastructure items were completed, we wanted to transform the cemetery into a welcoming space before we officially opened the doors to the public. These were the results of that transformation. So this is the waiting room, where customers can come in to wait for an appointment here. It used to be, this used to be the ground maintenance office. Now, this is where customers get service with our staff. That's the main office where payment is taken, and private meetings are held in there as well with citizens. And then this is where our grounds maintenance crew now resides. So... After we opened to the public, we increased our days of services from Tuesdays through Thursdays to Mondays through Fridays to give customers an additional two days of services. All these changes to the cemetery did not impact the cost to our residents. And in order to make these changes happen, it was a true collaborative effort throughout the city. And if I may, I wanted to just take some time to recognize some of those folks. Number one, Field Operations, IT, Budget and Finance. Elizabeth from Budget and Finance helped us get a new point-of-sale system, so thank you, Elizabeth. Faros and his team, led by Jimmy, Darko, and Sheila, helped us get the internet over to the cemetery, so everything was secure. Mr. Rick St. John and his team helped us set up cameras, so everything was safer and secure over at the cemetery. Billy, Roberta, Travis, and Robert all play a key role in making sure our grounds are okay, the grass looks good, the graves look good, customers get great service, and everything runs smoothly at the cemetery. Finally, Field Operations and IT have been working together, trying to create a new record-keeping system, and you'll hear more about that from IT in a future update. Some of the benefits for the residents of us having a cemetery. In 2003, the interment right policy limited those to only Glendale residents or family members of those in turn. And that logic was to support the second item, which is, we're here to provide a local and cost-effective option to the citizens of Glendale. We're not in competition with other cemeteries. We're just in the market to provide an additional option to our residents. The perpetual care fund's in place to ensure that long-term care and maintenance for the cemetery after all the plots are full. And the rates we'll be discussing today will assist us in the care and maintenance of the cemetery leading up to being able to use the perpetual care fund. In this section of the presentation, I want to review the current cost of providing services and a rate adjustment, but before I proceed, I just want to take a brief pause and open up for questions or comments for the operational update section.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions. Have we added any columbariums to the cemetery in the last couple of years or so? Because I think we discussed that at one time.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner. There is one small columbarium close to our office. I think that's been there for a few years now, but we have not added any additional columbariums at the cemetery at this time.
Okay. I know that we discussed the cemetery at length a few years ago, and that was one of the suggestions that would help make it run more profitably or more closer to break even, and that's the direction it appears that the public is moving with their wishes for their loved ones after they pass. You mentioned the perpetual care fund that was established by ordinance. Is it actually funded? And does it operate under the rules that the state has for cemetery perpetual care funds?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner. I can't speak to the legal portion, but we do have funds in the perpetual care fund. And as far as I know, I would have to refer to Vicki, but I think there's some interest.
Mayor, members of the council, there is a perpetual care fund. It's not technically as such, so it's not registered. Sorry, what is the word I'm looking for? It's not under state control, it's under your control, so it was developed and set aside by the council, so it doesn't follow exactly the rules that you would if you were a private entity operating a cemetery. But it is funded. I don't know the exact fund balance right now, but it's substantial. I'll say it's in the range of $6 million, maybe slightly more.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Vicki. Is that just an account in our general fund ledger where that money is? Or is it a separate bank account, or does it have any other conditions to it?
Mayor, members of the council, because it was created by you, it's in the assigned fund balance.
Okay, thank you. You'd mentioned that we now have staff on-site five days a week. I think that's terrific. I'm glad we're providing that extra service. The remodeling that you showed us looked like it was suitable for our operation at scale and the local nature of it, and also I'm pleased to see that. You'd mentioned that we sometimes help people find, not just arrange burial, but we help them find the locations where a loved one might be buried. How do we do that? Do we have written records, a map, do we have digitized records? How's that done?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Turner. Multiple different avenues. We have electronic records for some of our most recent transactions. We have paper records for some prior. So our staff will have burial cards, maps, contracts, where generally we would look for the last name and work our way back from there. Obviously, records from the 1900s might not be as robust as records from today. But typically, we start with the electronic records and work our way back with the paper records that we still have on-site.
Do you know if any of that's on the internet anywhere, so that genealogists, no matter where they might be, could be researching their loved ones, their ancestors?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner. I don't know if they're on the internet. If they are, it's not posted by us.
Okay. Just trying to get a handle on it at the cemetery. And all those fine Glendaleians buried there moved into my district during redistricting. Thank you, Councilmember Aldama. And so it's now something that I feel especially close to, and not to mention the fact that I have a number of relatives that are out there, including, I'm told that the first plot in that cemetery that was sold was sold to my great-grandfather. And so I have both the professional responsibility for it, but also a personal family responsibility as well, but thank you.
So this is the annual operating cost and revenue from 2016 to 2023. Keep in mind, this is with the rates from 2009. On average, we under-recovered by $49,000 up until year fiscal 2021. On the surface, that doesn't seem that bad, but in 2021 and 2022, we had a large increase of services surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic. And for those watching online or at home, our fiscal years start in July of the previous year. So fiscal year '21 didn't start until July of 2020. So that was right around those peak times during the pandemic. If we didn't have that service increase for those two fiscal years, our under-recover accumulative number would be much larger. And for context, from 2016 to 2020, we under-recovered almost $250,000. In fiscal year 2021 and '22, we recovered about $207,000. So we just closed this fiscal year, and when we ran those numbers at the beginning of the July, we had under-recovered about $62,000 roughly. Using those numbers over an eight-year period, we under-recovered about $105,000. And again, without those two peak years of 2021 and 2022, these numbers had the potential to be much worse. So we wanted to just show you that trend to highlight that the rate from 2009 will not be sustainable into the future.
Thank you, Mayor. How many plots are still left there? I didn't see that in here. Because I think, I mean, at least I remember when we were having the cemetery discussion, the reason that the private sector had interest was because columbariums are, you know, they make good use of space. I know that we have at least talked about doing that, but I mean, in order to, you know, you're talking about rates and making it continue to be financially viable, but once we run out of burial plots, if we don't build a columbarium or have some other way to generate revenue, it's literally just going to be a cost only. So where are we as far as how many remaining plots we have left out there that we could generate revenue with?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachov. I have rough estimated numbers of plots available. I did not put that on this presentation simply because the combination and the variables. If I have one plot, I can have three cremations in one plot. I can have two full burials and cremations on top of that. So the amount of services vary depending on the combinations. What I can say is we do have in our future capital for the cemetery, that was in your capital budget book that we just passed this year, future years, there is money in the budget earmarked for columbariums in the future. That was what we did during our most recent budget process. But the rough estimated numbers are approximately 570 available casket burial lots.
Single?
Single burial lots, yes, ma'am. There are approximately 840 ground cremation lots. And these are approximate numbers. We have roughly 13 niches available in the columbarium, and I believe you can put up to two in each. But again, multiple combinations of services can happen in one adult single lot. So I can't tell you how many burials that is, but I can tell you the rough estimated number of plots.
Mayor, if I could, do you, off the top of your head, and this probably isn't fair, but how far out, because it seems we're essentially out of space in the columbarium that we have, pretty much. How far out is that in the CIP? Is it in '24, '25, '25, '26? Is it in, you know, years five through 10? Where is that?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. I don't know exactly what year that's in, but I can get back to you and get you that.
I think we should at least maybe, depending on how far out that is, take a look at moving that up, because it's becoming more and more popular way to, you know, honor somebody too. And it's an easier way for people to visit when they come from out of town. You're not out there kind of just looking around, trying to figure out where you can find an actual grave. It makes a good use of space. So I'd like to know how far out that is, and then when we get ready for our planning for next year, maybe we can have that discussion. Thank you.
So as far as the rates are concerned, there's potentially thousands of different combinations of services that can be provided at the cemetery. So instead of showing all those possibilities, we wanted to just show you high level what the thought process was as far as the rates were concerned. We intend to increase the cost of a plot by 45%. So the cost of the plot will cover interment rights in that area and the ongoing maintenance of that area for the life of the cemetery leading up to the use of the perpetual care fund. What that means is, when we finish a burial, we have to plant seed. We have to water pretty heavy, so we can get that grass to establish. And then we have to cut the grass in that area in perpetuity. If there's litter or all those things that play into care of that plot goes into this 45% increase. So that's staff time, water, the totality of what it takes to provide services for that area for each plot. So that's what rolls into the cost increase. This increase would take an adult single grass plot from $1,624 per plot to $2,354.80 per plot. The $200 administration fee, this $200 administration fee covers all the time leading up to a contract being signed. So that means the meetings with the family, the free pamphlets, business cards and folders we give away, sidewalks, translation assistance if needed, and any other pre-contract work that will be required leading up to an actual contract being signed. And this is for pre-need or at-need transactions. So you will not be charged a $200 administration fee if you come and you want to buy a vase for a family member to put at your site. Markers, or more commonly known as headstones, are generally made of granite, and the prices fluctuate on a regular basis. As the cost of the markers increase, of course, the city recovers less of their operating costs in that. So we plan to charge market rate of the markers plus 55%. The 55% above the cost of the marker includes staff receiving the marker, inspecting it for damage before acceptance, ordering the marker, paperwork involved in ordering the marker, including final invoice and payment to the supplier. This increase would take a standard gray adult flat marker from $522 per marker to $856.60 per marker at the current market rate. As a reminder, we've kept these rates steady since 2009. That's 14 years of the same rate until our meeting today.
Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. Are people required, their families required, to buy the marker from us? Or that's just an option that they're offered?
That is, oh, excuse me, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. That is an option, they're not required to buy it, but we suggest that they buy it, because you can get markers that have a mix, not a solid granite. And once markers crack and things like that, it just becomes more cumbersome for the families. So we do recommend that they purchase the marker from the cemetery, but it's not a requirement to purchase a marker from the cemetery.
Okay. So Mayor, all of the markers that we're gonna be offering are all granite? No, I know, you know, a lot of the older cemeteries have, I don't know what you call it, the flat one that lays in the ground. I think it's brass. I'm not positive, but I think, and are we moving away from that? Or somebody wanted to do that? And especially like if you have side-by-side, and one person has already passed, and then the other person passes. I think that sometimes either they do two, or sometimes they finish the one when they know the dates for the other person. But so do we accommodate that too? I mean, like if somebody through our vendor or whatever, if somebody has a side-by-side plot, and let's say the wife has passed, but they need to go back and now add the dates of the second person who the plot was for passes?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. Yes, there are a plethora of different headstones, uprights, different colors, all granite. But we do, if there's side-by-sides, we do take care of the end date, we call it. We do take care of that as part of the contract or on a separate transaction, where there's a family member there now, and there's no family member, but we know eventually there might be. We take care of that engraving as a separate cost. And the customization of it is, again, whatever we pay plus 55%. So they can get whatever color that is available, and pictures, the whole nine yards, but we would charge what we pay plus the 55%.
Okay, Mayor, so we would be increasing that also? It's just basically across the board for every single service in that line would be an increase?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. Yes, for markers all across the board, each marker, the customer would pay 55% above what we pay.
Okay, thank you.
So that kind of concludes the presentation. I did want to go back just a little bit. Staff was able to provide me with the information. So in this year's capital plan, we had planned working on the fountain, the fence, and doing the irrigation replacement. We did not put in this year's CIP any sort of columbarium. What Mr. Thomas and his staff have done is just an incredible job going back through records, trying to actually quantify and clarify the records. So for example, we don't want to sell a space and then find out we actually have already somebody there. So we do have in the future CIP, I think starting in FY '27, '28, we've got some additional columbariums. Now that we're getting closer to the true knowing what's there, what's left, we can now work on, should we be buying and providing additional columbariums? So that's something we can work on here shortly as part of the budget process. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Mayor?
You've mentioned the word market. So are we above market rate or below market rate? And how do we compare to other municipal cemeteries and private cemeteries with the potential increase?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama. We are comparable, last year when we were doing the study, we were right in the middle. There aren't a lot of cities that have municipal cemeteries, but Tempe, Buckeye, and Mesa do. And we were right in the middle of those three on our rates last year before this proposed increase. With this increase, we'll be top two as far as services are concerned, but the plot cost, everyone including private, is more expensive than Glendale on the cost of the plot. So again, the variation of services, I don't know all the combinations of, if they just do gray markers, or if they do colored markers or custom markers like we allow. So I can't say across the board if we're more or less expensive, but on those main services, we're right in the middle.
Thank you for that. And then lastly, is it our goal with the potential increases that we're just covering the deficit? Or are we trying to be into the green, and what amount or what percentage?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Aldama. We just want to recover what we're spending. We know water costs more, we know utilities cost more, fuel costs more. So cutting the grass is becoming more expensive, watering the grass is becoming more expensive. When we have vandalism or things of that nature that happen, we have to take care of those things, and that is more expensive. So really, we're just trying to recover our expenses in this rate increase.
I guess I said final, but this is my last question. When was our last increase?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Aldama. 2009.
2009 was the last?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone on.
It's on now, right? Couple of questions. On average, how many people avail themselves of the cemetery? How many people avail themselves of the cemetery services per year?
Mayor, mi- members of council, council mem- or Vice Mayor, uh, Clark. On average, pre-COVID, uh, we were about thirty to thirty-five uh burials per year.
Right, but we're not in COVID anymore. So prior to COVID, what was it?
Y- y- yes, ma'am. Pre-COVID, it was thirty, thirty-five. Around thirty-five.
Prior to COVID.
That's what he's saying.
It was thirty to thirty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I note that the deficit is around thirty thousand a year, the operating deficit. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor.
No, sixty-two thousand, excuse me. Okay. Now, I just want to make sure I got the numbers right. You're proposing the basic cost of a plot go from sixteen hundred to twenty-three hundred?
Mayor, members of council, uh, Vice Mayor Clark, yes, roughly, yes.
Okay, so that's a seven hundred dollar increase. And then the markers are going from uh approximately five hundred to eight hundred. And that's a three hundred dollar increase, roughly.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, for that specific type of marker, yes.
Okay, so we're talking a minimum of a thousand dollars increase per burial. That be about right?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, yes.
So if we get. On average, about thirty burials a year with an increase of a thousand per burial. That's thirty thousand a year we're still short.
Mayor, if, if I may, Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor Clark. It's, it's not quite uh linear in that, in that sense. Because there's also opening, opening and closing fees and that's generally labor cost. Which will also play a role in that. And then when you look at each fiscal year. Um, it, it's not, it's not as linear as every time someone does a burial. They pay that full burial that year because we do have some customers that make monthly payments. So when you go back and look at our um, our two thousand sixteen to twenty-twenty-three. I'm sure a lot, a lot of folks watching would say, well, the peak of COVID might have been twenty-twenty, but you still had a lot of revenue in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Well, some of those were those monthly payments that tripled in over the next couple of years. The monthly payments from those burial services that happened in twenty-twenty. So it, it's, it's not quite linear where we say we have thirty-five burials this year. And all the revenue from those thirty-five burials are shown in our budget that year. Sometimes it, it, it is for one burial paid in full. Sometimes it's a burial that's paid over amount, of amount of time.
So, okay, so the sixteen thousand, sixty thousand plus that we're short. Is that due to tangible costs or operational costs? By tangible, I mean the plot and the headstone versus. Intangible costs, which would be the services in the operation.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember, uh, Clark, both. If, if you look at the services we provide, um, and some of my staffs here today. We just approved, uh, or council approved. Cola this year. And if you, if I don't raise my rates along with cola, my labor costs creep up on my operating costs. And then that causes me to recover less of what we're spending to provide that service. So in a, i- in a linear fashion in that regard. I want to raise the labor cost for providing the service along with our uh salary increases. So that's one of the intangibles that you mean. And then the, the uh tangible costs like fuel, for example. In two thousand nine, I can't even remember what we paid for fuel, but now it's, it's much more. And so cutting the grass and paying for those uh fuel costs is, is more expensive, which rolls in.
Okay, uh, uh, I, I think. Vice Mayor Clark, may I, may I try this? I think the question you're asking is, is the proposed rate adjustments, are they going to close the gap? Or are they intended to solve it? And what, what Mr. Thomas has shown you here is some example rates that we have. These are some of the most common ones and these, he's just mentioned, there's also the other ones, the opening and closing costs as well. And what, what the intent is, and staff spend a lot of time and work with budget and finance as well, they actually did a time study. What, wh- what does our staff spend their time on? And how do we cover their costs by doing this? And so these rate adjustments are intended to cover the cost, to cover that gap in service. Not just narrow it, but to actually cover the cost in service. We want the cemetery to actually cover its operating costs every year and that's what this is intended to do.
I mean, I, I know we have a philosophy, which I support, that we're. For example, in parks and recreation, we have facilities and we try to do cost recovery. And we don't. We don't always cover the cost recovery. Um, in a lot of our parks and recreation facilities. I, I guess I'm just having problems with this because it's a cemetery and it's creepy. And the idea of raising the rates by a thousand bucks all at one time. And that's just, that's just the minimum. That's just for the marker, a standard old marker and a standard old plot. That's, that's pretty steep for a lot of people to raise it a thousand all in one shot. If, I guess I don't care about cost recovery so much for the cemetery. But if a majority of council does want to do cost recovery. I, I would like to see a much more gradual approach. We use a gradual approach for water rates and sanitation rates. We don't charge the full ball, all at once because we'd have uprisings. Um, here, there's nobody to uprise. But I, I, I really am. I really am disturbed about this one and our attempt to do cost recovery at a cemetery. When it's, it's such a specialized service. For our citizens. I, I don't have anything more to say right now, except. If we do move forward with this, I'd like to see a much more gradual approach than raising rates.
Thank you. Some interesting conversations there. Are there any other departments or divisions within the city that we run in a deficit? And have pretty much adopted that? So do you, do you know, maybe Vicky Rios can answer that? Yeah, and don't say all of them.
Well, Mayor and members of the council, that is kind of the answer. Most of the departments in the city are not intended to be cost recovery. So um, most of them, i- if you look at it, they're supported by taxpayer dollars and they don't, they don't recover their own costs, so.
Thank you, that's, um, so, and we don't have a policy for specifically to the cemetery that states that we have to be in a cost recovery mode. And so. I think it's. Possible that we talk about carrying the deficit at the cemetery. Um, and for the reasons that Ms. Rios just, just mentioned, how she described it is. Is we, we're not in a cost recovery mode in other departments, why would we do that in the cemetery? And I get it, not, not everybody that comes to the cemetery uh for those services are Glendale residents. But I'd like to know how we carry that deficit and what does that look like?
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think the, the policy question in front of the council really is this. When we had our prior workshop several years ago, there was, it appeared to be a direction of the council to treat the. Um, to treat the, the cemetery more as enterprise fund and to invest back in it and try to just kind of break even with those costs. And so what Thomas and the team has done is they've looked at saying, let's, what does it take to invest back in it? So we're not running it on a shoestring per se, but we can be proud of, of putting our name on that. So really, it's, it's an issue of, do you want to treat it somewhat like an enterprise fund and just have expenses? Be covered by revenue? Or if, if not, then just remember what, what, what you have to backfill that with then is general fund dollars. And those are the general fund dollars that we compete with in the budget process for other things. Again, it's not so large of a number that we couldn't carry that deficit. But, but really, the, the direction the council had provided a couple of years ago was to say, look. We haven't invested in this cemetery very well. Let's bring up the quality, let's, let's, let's get full-time staffing out there. If you recall, we had kind of a part-time person that would meet with uh prospective customers wanting to. Uh, look at purchasing a plot or other services. And the direction was, let's, let's invest back into it. If it means we have to be, um, you know, a little bit more aggressive on our rates, let's do that. What I will say is, i- from that value proposition that Charles talked to within kind of our guiding principles. If you go across the street, you're going to pay significantly more money. Than if you, wi- with, if you go to Glendale with these rate increases. So we still provide a high value. And, you know, I, I, I just, but again, I think the policy decision is, do you want to try to have enough money to continue to reinvest? And to really to kind of raise the overall quality? Do you want to kind of keep it where it's at? Or do we, you know, do you want to provide subsidies? So that's the policy discussion and really, you know, that's just, we get direction from the council. Um, but again, I want to remind you is that our rates, even with the increase. Are, are still going to be a significant value if you walk across the street and deal with the private sector cemetery across the street.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first I have a question about uh the labor costs and some of the costs you were talking about. Do we still use um volunteer hours at the cemetery? Because I know in the past, uh, there was, I was out there one time when they actually had a group of volunteers came in and they put them out. You know, pulling weeds and doing landscape work. Are we still using that and, uh, today?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Mollinar, yes. Um, we use, uh, we have a contract with the, um, Maricopa County where we use. Community service workers to bridge the gap. Um, I have a group of phenomenal staff. Two of which are sitting out there right now, Travis and Robert, who. Ma- manage, along with Billy, uh, manage the community service workers during the day. And generally, they don't generally work any heavy equipment. It's picking up weeds, making sure all those flowers that have deteriorated around each grave get picked up and put in the proper place. Most, mostly busy work. All the heavy lifting is, is truly internal staff. And that's the only, um, that's the only cost that we consider. The only time that we consider in the rate is Robert, Billy and, and Travis's time.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I, I'm glad we're still using service hours because I know that helps uh reduce our overall maintenance costs. Uh, regarding the issue we're discussing versus uh the uh, you know, how we want to fund this project. Uh, it's my, my opinion that um, that many of the services we provide are, as, to the residents are a public service. And the entire public benefits from it. Uh, whether we have a park or uh whether it's sewer or water, whatever, the entire public is benefiting from those services. Uh, I don't see that in the case of the cemetery. I see it as a limited. Number of people who actually would be using those services and there's a lot of options. You know, there's only parks mostly in the city of Glendale, so we, we provide those parks. Uh, but for cemeteries, uh, people have a lot of options. I'm of the opinion that those services should be trying to cover their expenses and uh doing a cost recovery. And I, I feel that that is the best way to move forward. And I think it's fair to the public. Uh, we're not using, uh, we're, we're still going to be using some taxpayer funds perhaps. I don't know how the capital costs, I know when we had this discussion some time ago. Uh, we decided not to move forward. Historically, we wanted to keep the cemetery. But at the same time, there were many issues brought up as to improvements that needed to happen beyond what you've done so far. Uh, with the, just the office, but the actual improvements to some of the uh permanent fixtures out there. Are those capital costs included in these assessments? Or is that additional capital costs from the general fund that would have to go into that?
Mayor, members of the council, uh, Councilmember Mollinar, the capital projects. That we have slated in our budget have uh no bearing on the rate whatsoever.
Okay, so they would be funded by, by, uh, by the taxpayer basically through our capital projects?
From, yes, through, through the general fund, yes, sir.
Okay, so in a sense, we're kind of a quasi, we're not covering all of our costs uh through this process of recovery. But we're covering the, uh, I guess incremental costs, you know, when someone is needing the service. So, uh, and I think that's a, a fair compromise. Um, we, we are covering, uh, as a citizens, we're covering that capital cost. Which I think would be fair because it's historical, it's, it's a place that people can go uh and have that historical perspective. And so I wouldn't have a problem continuing that. But as far as the actual day-to-day operations, I believe that we should cover that with a, a cost recovery system. Thank you.
Hey, uh, I'm going to ask a couple of questions and then I'll go to Mr. Turner, I think he wanted to speak. And I, I would caution the, the council before uh you make up your mind either way on what we're going to do. Keep in mind that legislature just a week ago decided that we're going to lose, I think it's close to thirteen million dollars in residential rental tax. And it's going to be very difficult for us to get back. It's general fund money. And so, uh, with uh this looming potential of. Uh, what I continually keep hearing of a possible recession, I certainly don't want. The city or us, or any of us to go back where we were literally ten years ago. So, uh, please keep that in mind. I, I, I don't like the idea of raising anything if I can help it, but at the same time, I certainly don't want to get in a situation that we were a, a few years ago. One other question I had for you. On, uh, and I can't remember the name of. Thing where you would put the ashes. I can't remember what you called that.
Columbarium.
That one, yeah. Is it, is it against the rules for us to take the money that has been set aside to. Keep the cemetery up in good shape, use that money to build those and then as people. Ashes are interned in that, then pay that back? Is that, is that not able to do that or can we do that? All I'm thinking is if we could speed that process up and get it quicker. Uh, that could solve some of those problems, maybe get a little bit more money and not have to worry as much about running out of room.
Uh, Mayor, I think what we'd looked at there was uh things that were improving the cemetery overall, the fencing, the fountain. That's what we've got coming out of the general fund this year. And we looked at the columbariums and that type of thing. Uh, funding them through the rate increases and others in the future. Uh, we can talk with budget and finance and the attorney's office to find out if the perpetual care fund can be used to accelerate those. What we had to do first off was find out the inventory, what do we have left and the timing of the need. So we can have that conversation and come back to a budget season with that.
And again, I don't know if it's legal or not. If, if it's not uh governed by state standards, then i- if we make up the rules, I guess we can. Sort of do what we want. But anyway, it's just a thought. Uh, I, I'm going to go to Mr. Turner next and then you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Whether or not we use the uh perpetual fund, I, I do think that uh. Advancing as quickly as possible the columbariums unless there's some data. Again, we're a data-driven organization. If there's some national data that says that that's not the direction that the public's moving in. Then uh we might not want to do it. But what, what I've read and I haven't done an extensive study is that that definitely is. And I think that getting columbariums up is, um, would be to our advantage. I don't know, again, don't know how much columbarium space we have currently, but. So it was also mentioned that we're still way cheaper than uh Rest Haven across the street. I'd actually, again, being data-driven, I'd like to see that data so that we really have numbers to look at. It was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, if I heard correctly, that we're not being asked to provide any direction today. This is information only. I trust at some point, if the rates are going to change, it'll come to the council to set the new rate. are going to change, it'll come to the council to set the new rates. But, in the other observation I have that's a challenge is that typically, when rates for anything go up, participation can go down. And so, that's one of the reasons I'm interested in better handle on what the market is, not so much among our peer cities, because that wouldn't really be, somebody wouldn't say, well, Glendale's too expensive, I'm going to go to Mesa, you know. So, I'm interested more in our local market here, and would like to have a higher level of confidence in our costs as compared to what is available here in the near west or northwest valley. I know there are other burials locations available as well. But I am a little bit concerned that if the price goes up, that we actually could end up with fewer interments and therefore less revenue, or not nearly as much as we thought. I'm not philosophically opposed to cost recovery of the operating expense side of it. So, if that's what we're, if that's, if other council members would lean in that direction, I'd like to see what those numbers actually look like and go from there. The cemetery is, is an amenity that the city offers that's not a whole lot different than others. I mean, not everybody partakes in our libraries, not everybody partakes in all of our parks, some don't even partake in their local park. You know, we put on public programming, festivals, things like that. Not everybody participates. It's an amenity that's available for all of our citizens. And, I mean, we have residents that never go out to the landfill on their own. I mean, their garbage may go, but they don't pay the tipping fees or anything like that on their own. So, this is not something foreign to, you know, what the community would provide as an amenity for its residents. So, I think that it is fair to look at it as having a general good, as well as the good for whatever families are utilizing it, just like the good that a family that uses a park to go picnic in gets a benefit from that. And the community, and certainly at least that neighborhood as a whole, gets a benefit from open space and, you know, trees putting carbon dioxide back in the air, wildlife habitat, and all of that as well. So, it's not just, we're not directly competing with private enterprise, we're not looking to replace them, and we were in the market first. So, I don't have any, suffer any guilt about any of that stuff. And I do think that it's a good public, general public benefit, not unlike parks, libraries, swimming pools, or anything else that we do. Thank you.
That's on, okay. Thank you, Mayor. I support the idea of running this similar to an enterprise fund. I think that's, in my opinion, the prudent way to do this. I think it would have been helpful because we're just guessing. I mean, if Councilmember Clark, you know, wants to watch the cost, but I have no idea how much a plot is cost across the street at Rest Haven. If I knew that it was $6,000 and we're $2,300, I would think, then we're still a very reasonable option. But I don't, I know Mr. Phelps said it's considerably higher, but I don't know how much higher. So, I think it would have been helpful, and if, when we, when you bring this back to us, for us to actually make a decision. I support the rate increases, but I think it would have probably been easier to convince everybody that we're not, that we're still a very reasonable option, and I believe that we are. If we knew what, how much does it cost to buy a plot, a single burial plot across the street, what does that cost? What is our cost? I think for some of us, that would have been really helpful. But I do support the rate increase. I believe it's coming back to us. We're just in for information today. And I did want to, I did have a question. As far as for the improvements to the cemetery, do we, is there, do we have any geo bond of it? Would it qualify for open space? Would it qualify, I mean, are there other sources besides the general fund? Because I know all these years with the amphitheater, we were saying we had it under parks, and then when we were looking at all of our bond authority, it was, we realized, I think I was the one that brought it up, that we had, I forget what even the category is that we're using now, but we have, we have some bond authority for different things, and a way, maybe it might be a better way to do it is to finance it with geo bonds. If any of this would fit, it definitely would be capital improvements. If it would fit under any of the bond categories that we already have, that might be something we might want to explore, if we could do that rather than take the money out of the general fund. So, that, and then, does Glendale Works go out there, Mayor?
I think they have, when requested.
Okay, and maybe we could put them in the rotation too, to try to keep some of those costs down, as far as, you know, you know, after, I know this year probably, there was probably more to do out there, because when we have, you know, a rainy season, and then we get a lot more weeds popping up and things like that. But we have them available out several days a week, out working, you know, around on city property, and that would be another option. So, but I would like to know, when you come back, how much is the plot across the street, and if there are any geo bond categories that would fit with doing these improvements to the cemetery? Thank you.
I've got one final question. I think we're running out of questions for you. You had mentioned that there are people that are financing their plots and making payments. Do they pay an interest on that, or is that just divided into, and there's no interest charged whatsoever?
Mayor, I'm not sure if they pay an interest. I have to check with, I believe it's Elizabeth in Budget and Finance, but I'm not sure if they pay interest on that or not.
Well, and the very reason I ask that is if we do go out for bonding or anything, we're paying an interest, so we shouldn't be paying interest in somebody else is using our money and not paying interest. So, something else to think about. Were you done? All right, thank you. Okay, item number two.
Valley Benchmark Communities 2021-2022 Update.
Mayor, members of the council, as we get prepared for the second item, just like to let the council know that this, for Kayla Stanfield, our Director of Organization Performance, this will be her last presentation in front of the council. She's recently accepted a position in the private sector with Baker Tilly. They're a very well-recognized, top-10 advisory and consulting firm. And so, again, Kayla, thank you again for your, all your contributions over the past several years. And with that, take it away.
May I on? Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and thank you, Mayor and council, for all your support over the past few years. And I am, it was an honor to serve not only you and our leadership team, but also our citizens and employees as well. So, with that, good afternoon, Mayor and council. City management has asked us to provide an annual update, report on our engagement with the Valley Benchmark Communities. So, we will be giving you an update on the 2021-2022 engagement report. So, our agenda for today, we're going to go over the purpose of the Valley Benchmark Communities, give you all an update on those that are participants of this, also provide you an update on this year's annual report, share some of the metrics that have been updated on this past year, and also give you a look into what's coming in the year ahead. All right, so the purpose of VBC is to improve our local government performance in Arizona, and it was created to help the local governments improve their performance. The cities work together to identify common demographic, financial, and performance information, provide and discuss the information to better understand those similarities and those differences between our complex and diverse operations, share data to improve not only our data, but also our data business practices. And also, it gives us an opportunity to call upon high-performing cities to share information and resources. For the community, this tool has been important for us to help local government improve the lives of the community that are using this data, and look at it as benchmarking, and also increase staff engagement in our professional development, and also shared data sharing practices. The VBC is hosted by Marvin Andrews and the Jane Morris Fellows Program at Arizona State University, as well as the Center for Urban Innovation at ASU. Our major partners include MAG, as well as Maricopa County. There are also several other partner groups that participate in VBC, and they either volunteer their time through participation in events and meetings, or by donating funds for the group. And as you'll see here on this slide, we now have 13 communities to review all of the metrics in the report to make sure that we're comparing items of real value, and she's also built those relationships and coordinating with all the other representatives of the BBC group. And then you'll see there, we've listed our Chair of Membership and also the Chair of Data. And so, I will be handing the rest of the presentation over to Ms. Derta, and she'll be presenting the highlights of the annual report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This year, we wanted to provide some additional information for you on the report that you have a copy of. We've personalized it with a line for Glendale, and we've added a West Valley median to all the charts. The cities that were included in this West Valley median were Avondale, Buckeye, Glendale, Goodyear, Peoria, and Surprise. And as Ms. Stanfield mentioned, the greatest value that we derive from working on this report and working with VBC is the engagement we see with cities across the valley. Cities that may be strong in areas where we can look to them to learn things, and in turn, we're looked at and provide support to other cities and areas where we are strong. And this deep connection between cities helps us go beyond comparing statistics. It helps us understand the differences and similarities between our communities, so we can take what has been successful in another city and adapt it for here in Glendale. As for the work plan we shared with you, last year, we have updated half of the metrics in the annual report. The group's planned updates were presented in March at the VBC's Annual Managers Meeting. Police, Fire, and Finance and Administration Services all received updates. Most notably among those updates, the Fire section will include an additional ambulance response time metric. For Police, we made updates to accommodate the switch from the federal reporting of Uniform Crime Reporting, or UCR, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, also known as NIBR. For Finance and Admin, we added a Property Damage Liability Claim Cycle and some Workforce Diversity Metrics. We also have added a new section of data that's been previously collected but not published under Development Services, which includes the average turnaround time for permits for single-family standard plan in business days, and the number of permits issued for single-family standard plan, and the FTEs to issue those permits. You will see these changes and the additional ones in the next year's report. Other events of note this year were engagement with Polco, or VBC, to receive free access to their GPAL tool for national comparison, utilizing over 100 publicly available data sets. We also had engagement with GFOAZ to help start a fellowship program through ASU to provide some statewide outcome-based reporting around financials using ACFRs and power, and utilizing the tool of Power BI. And the group is hopeful that in the future, we'll be able to incorporate those into the annual report. In our year ahead, we will be holding our Annual Performance Management Forum. This, that's actually on Thursday. This year, it'll be hybrid meeting with in-person options in Tempe. This year, the forum is going to be a little different. Usually, you have presentations from individual people about a particular performance area. This year, we're going to be holding three panels, one around homelessness, one around drought management, and one around city performance. Our own Matt Hess and Joanne Toms from Community Services and Water Services Departments, respectively, were asked to serve as experts on these panels, and I was asked to moderate the city performance panel. In March, I will be completing my term as the Valley Benchmark Chair, and then we will hold an election at that time. This next year, we will also be updating the metrics for the areas of demographics, library, parks and recreation, water, sewer, trash, sustainability, and drought management. Glendale is actually leading the library and drought management deep dives to help come up with these new or refined metrics for the upcoming report. This concludes our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I think you got off easy today. Job. Item three.
Informational update on Glen Lake's Remnant Properties City-Owned Property.
Mayor, members of the council here provide the third item for today's agenda. It will be Tabitha Perry, our Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. As indicated, this is an informational presentation only, therefore, I would not be seeking council consensus. However, I'm looking forward to receiving council's input. The subject property is the Glen Lakes Remnant Parcel, which is approximately 1.5 acres in size, and is located at the northeast corner of 55th and Northern Avenues. Here is some background information. In March of 2021, this was presented as a council item of special interest requested by Councilmember Turner. In June of 2021, Economic Development Office provided a market analysis to assist and determine what the next steps would be. In October of 2021, council gave direction to proceed with entitlements for approval, followed by enlisting a broker for potential sale or lease of the subject property. In February of 2022, council provided a consensus to proceed forward with a minor general plan amendment changing the land use designation from open space to plant commercial, and a rezoning application from A1 Agricultural to PAD Plan Area Development. In addition, council directed staff to initiate outreach efforts to get input from the surrounding residents. We sent out notification letters that mimic the radius of notification for the Trevano subdivision proposal that is to the north of the subject property. On March 2022, staff hosted that neighborhood outreach meeting. Thirty individuals attended that meeting. There was limited input on the type of land uses that the residents were open to having listed as permitted land uses, but they were very vocal on the different type of land uses that they were in opposition of being proposed within a PAD proposal. Some of the uses that the residents were open to was a sit-down, full-service restaurant, retail, and a indoor recreational facility. Some of the land uses that the residents were proposing was financial institution. The reason for that one is that they felt that there was or is a bank just south of Northern Avenue. They were opposed to convenient uses as well as childcare facility. In the presentation, the next forthcoming slides, there are lists of permitted land uses that have been drafted. Some of those uses are not in line with some of the uses that the surrounding neighborhood indicated they did not want proposed at the subject location, but using sound planning principles, looking at the area. These are proposed permitted land uses that staff perceive would be most appropriate for the subject site. So, before you now is the draft permitted land uses. I won't go over all of them, but just to summarize, the live-work units, assisted living, nursing homes, rehabilitation facilities, business or trade school, dry cleaning establishment, full-service restaurant, childcare, professional offices. Some draft conditional permitted land uses, these will include performance standards for the restaurant with the drive-through service, eight-foot wall adjacent to residential land uses, and approval of adequate queuing. Then permitted with conditional use permit would be an outdoor recreational facility. This is one that the residents, some of them, indicated that they thought would be appropriate for the subject site. And on this slide, we're proposing some prohibited land uses. Those uses would include car wash, self-storage, thrift store, pawn shop, medical marijuana establishment, for example. Next steps, after we receive council's input, tentatively dates for a formal neighborhood meeting would be within August of this year, followed by Planning Commission, public hearing in October, and then before City Council for a final vote in November of this year. And with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. So, the neighbors had expressed that they weren't excited, that they would prefer not to have financial institutions and daycare, but that's on our recommended list from staff. Were there others that are on that list that you're recommending that the residents had? Were there others that are on that list that you're recommending that the residents had expressed concerns about?
Mayor, Council, that covers the majority from a high level from what I received back from the residents, keeping in mind that we did not have a draft proposal when we had the initial outreach. So we still would need to go back before the residents with the formal neighborhood meeting.
Thank you, and Mayor Tabitha. The conditional permitted land uses, the draft, would be restaurants with drive-through services or drive-through windows. And I assume by restaurant, that would also include coffee shops with a drive-through. Would that be correct?
Mayor Council, that is correct.
And then, as I recall, some other council members have had some issues in their districts regarding drive-up windows and microphones and speakers and that whole thing. So I don't have any firsthand experience in my district with it, so I would appeal to any of you if you think that that would be a concern that perhaps we ought to move drive-throughs to the, not, you know, drive-through restaurants, to the not used, you know, the don't do it list instead of the permitted list, the use permit. So again, I don't have, you know, experience in my district with that, but I thought that maybe some other members had had some issues in their district with the noise from that. And then, so I invite you to share your thoughts if you have any. And then the other question I have for staff is, so we're already over two years into this. Is there, what's the expected time that we might actually put this parcel on the market?
Mayor, Council, I can't speak of when the subject property would go on the market with the broker, but tentatively, we're trying to have the entitlements before council in November of this year. As directed by council, we wanted to have the entitlements in place prior to the city enlisting the broker to take the subject property out for a bid for purchase or lease.
Okay, so if we accomplish the November timeline, then come January, it should be able to be on the market? Okay, thank you.
I'll jump in here, answer a question from my perspective. I don't know if anybody, any of the council, lives any closer to fast food restaurants than I do. I've got an Arby's about 400 feet away, and a Jack in the Box probably 450 feet away. Because of the eight-foot-high walls, we don't have a problem with speaker noise. We just have a problem with noise, just because I'm so close to a main road. So maybe if I didn't have so much traffic on Camelback Road, maybe I'd hear the speakers. I don't know, but it's just noisy where I'm at. But I don't have any issues with speakers. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, City Manager Report.
Mayor members of the council, just one quick update, just to kind of compliment staff. So as you know, we own a number of facilities. And recently, at Foothills Aquatic Center, we had a mechanical failure that flooded three of the motors that helped filtrate the pools, and we had to shut it down. And, but it was, we had a great turnaround. Our field operations team and our water services team got together with our Parks team to come up with some intermediate solutions. And so now, right now, the system is now fully operating. We've been able to replace all the damaged pumps that were there. And all we're doing right now is just working on balancing out the water chemistry. And we hope to have it back to regular schedule this Thursday. And we'll do an email blast out to all the users there to let them know it's back being used. But this was a great example of a, of one department, the Parks Department, having a major, you know, issue. And, but our water services team and our facilities team jumped in to assist them. And so kudos to them, and again, a great turnaround. But we will have Foothills Aquatic Center back open for public swim here by Thursday.
Is that all you have?
One other item, Mayor. We had, the City Manager's Office has received an unsolicited offer for city-owned property. And I'm notifying the council of that. And per our current policy, we'll be going into executive session, which to discuss that offer. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report.
No report at this time, thank you.
Council item of special interest agenda, on your agenda is the opportunity for the council that has special items of interest. Each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed in the future. Councilmember Aldama.
Yes, thank you. My item of interest is for my district. However, I did briefly chat with the council member, but I thought today we were going to receive, it wasn't written on the agenda, but maybe an update with regard to the project that's actually on the golf course. So my item of interest is that this council receive an update. It looks like the place is abandoned, and people in my district are asking what's wrong with it and what's going on. So can we get an update according to the schedule of the new policy that you have for the items of interest on the Glen Lakes Golf Course project that's happening now?
Mayor, I can provide an update, or I can do a written update, whatever the pleasure the council is.
We can wait when you come back.
Is that all you have?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing, Jay, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, I do have something today. Couple of things. I know we're wrapping up the, our UDC code. And I know we had had a discussion in the past about signs in the median. I don't know where we left that. I don't know if that's going to be included in the updated UDC code. And then I did ask another question related to signs. Ms. Perry responded to me. My question was, does the city have any regulations regarding content on signs? If anything, that may be of adult nature or things like that? And the answer was no. So I don't know whether we want to have a discussion on adding something into our UDC code where there's at least some sort of regulation on content on signs, especially on digital. But I mean, on any sign. But we, apparently at this moment, we don't have any parameters that people need to work around as far as what they can use on signs. That's what the answer, I have the email right here in front of me, that we do not have anything. So I don't know if anybody, I would like to have that discussion. And then also included in that as to where we left things with, it was part of when we did the aggressive panhandling and all of that, and we discussed, I see Mr. St. John shaking his head. And I know we had a discussion about placing signs in the median because if we're not going to let, I believe if we're not going to let people stand in the median, holding a sign, then we should be consistent and say, you can't also, it's also not safe to go out there and put signs out there. And it really is a distraction when you're driving too, to have a bunch of signs in the median. So if there's a, I don't know whether there'd be a consensus to add that or not, but I don't think we ever had that discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I would be happy to join Councilmember Aldama in his request for an update on the Trevino Project, on the former Glen Lakes Golf Course. And just to fill it in a little bit for anyone who may be watching, after a break of more than six months at least, Homes by Town is back at work now on the site. And I don't know what their ultimate schedule for having model homes open and proceeding with sales, but they are back at work after having done nothing for, having taken a hiatus, I guess, for six or more months. It was, so that's good news for the residents in that area. It was looking like a worst-case scenario there for quite a while for them. We also did have some family of geese back this year and a couple of duck, or a couple of, now, there wouldn't be ducks born from it, it would be goslings born from it. Some baby geese were born. And the neighbors had put out a plastic waiting pool and kept water for them and did the best they could to provide the creature comforts for mom, dad, and the kids. And I believe they've all flown the coop now. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to Councilmember Tomachoff's question about regulating sign content, I don't believe we can, don't believe any municipality can regulate the content of signs. I believe it's a freedom of speech issue. And with regard to the ducks, I noticed that they migrated over to the golf course, Desert Bronze Golf Course, which has a handy-dandy little lake. And we've seen an increase in swans and ducks out of that facility. So they might have found a new home. As for any comment or subject, I have none today. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't have anything to bring up today. So with that, can I get a motion going into executive session?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second from everybody. Is there any discussion on a motion? Are you none, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. There's the ayes have it, council meeting is recessed.